Recording in progress.
Okay, welcome to the December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of Lewisville City Council. May I get a roll call?
Mayor Lay.
Here.
Councilmember Fahey.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Hefner.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Go moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Public comments on items not on the agenda and items on the consent agenda. This is a chance for anyone to speak on an item not on our agenda or any item on the consent agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Please tell us your name and if you're a Lewisville resident. So I think I've got cards if you are here, but you haven't submitted a card and you. Yes, thank you. There's one change in the consent agenda concerning a one of the folks who's on the Recreation Advisory Board list. And if anybody wants to look at that, it's up here. It's, you know, there's one, one change and one change only. Anyway, if you, if you want to speak during the items not on the agenda and items on the consent agenda, and you haven't filled out a card, please do. They're right out there in the hallway and you can give them to our city clerk, Maryeth Muth, and we'll go from there. And we'll probably talk with, there'll be a couple of people online. Looks like we got a couple of hands raised as well. So first, Dan Anderson from Castle Rock is here about Vista Hospital, perhaps?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, my name is Dan Anderson and I'm the Regional CFO for the Advent Health Hospitals here in Denver. I do live in Castle Rock and so it's my pleasure to drive up here this evening and, and say a few words with you. But just wanted to let you know kind of what's going on at a Vista. We've been dedicated to serving residents of Lewisville and the surrounding area for over thirty years. We've delivered over sixty thousand babies. That's a pretty good sized town over this time period. And as many as you are aware, we had a, a recent challenge with a fire. And, but before that fire, we had identified some of our needs to transition and look for other alternatives to continue delivering the healthcare that we want to deliver in the marketplace. Our current location is a little bit landlocked and that was proven during the fire. We only had one way in and out. And so it kind of put a, a focus on that. And I want to just affirm this board and thank you for your unwavering support of our facility. And we equally want to support this community. You know, there is recently a transition that we've gone through as we've separated from Centura Management Company. And so there's been some misinformation, you know, spread throughout. And we just kind of want to make sure that we have a voice here and that you have a chance to talk with us directly so we can keep the record straight about who we are and what we're doing. Vista Advent Health Hospital, now known as Advent Health of Vista, is managed by Advent Health, based in Orlando, Florida. Advent Health has always owned this facility. It was just managed by Centura for the past twenty-six years. That's now over. And so anything that this council and anyone else in the city has heard from anyone in Centura is history. And I would suggest is not part of what we're doing going forward. But we do want this council to know that we have acquired, I have a contract on forty acres in the Redtail Ridge development that is part of our focus in considering our options for the future. And, and we've acquired that land because we do want to be, continue to be a major employer in the city of Lewisville and taking care of Lewisville residents and others in the surrounding area. But this change with Advent Health taking over management of our facility has put a little bit more gasoline on the fire. Bad, bad example, but it's increased our urgency of saying, we want to get going on this plan. We'd kind of been stymied a little bit and kind of slowed down under this Centura leadership. But we are very focused on this. We want to keep going. We want the city council to know that it is sincerely our intent to stay in the market and continue to deliver healthcare. And just want you to know that we're open to any questions. And we'd love to have you out for a visit at a Vista and we can talk more about our plans. But I just wanted to share that with the council. Thank you.
Okay, next is Sherri Summer and she's signed up for six minutes, I think. I guess it says that you're pooling time with Cindy Bedell. Is Cindy in the house or online?
Hi, yes, I'm here. This is Cindy and I've given my time to Sherri.
Okay, all right. And Sherri Summer, you have six minutes.
Thank you so much. I'd like to comment on the recent Boarding Commission interviews and the choosing of applicants. I attended all of the interviews except for two at the very beginning. And I believe that the litmus test that was used to select members of the Planning Commission was Redtail Ridge. I feel very strongly that we need to revisit this process and do it in a fair way. When, I noticed that applicant Krantz and Howe had very detailed responses to their questions. In contrast with Brownice and Basket, who were chosen to, as incumbents, to be reappointed. I looked at the interviews. Keaton, Krantz and Howe had very excellent interviews. I believe Brownice's interview was overly, overall good, but he misspoke when he stated that something, the comp plan has the force of law when it doesn't. What I believe he should have said was that we need to align the code and the comp plan to make our processes transparent to all. Deborah Basket's interview was fine, but it was not as thorough as those of Krantz and Howe. I noticed a lot of nonverbal cues in this meeting. When applicants for other boards were greeted, it seemed completely professional. There was no issue. But I noticed a big difference in treatment between Basket, Brownice, and Howe and Keaton. Also, Josh and Chris were also greeted. And Bing were treated in a very different way than Keaton and Tamar. They were greeted very warmly. It felt like a real chit chat session, like they were really happy to see them. And when Howe and Krantz entered the room, it was very, very clinical and cold and frosty. I could see a very big difference and we can look at the tapes. There was a breach of norms during this meeting. Mayor Lay changed his demeanor abruptly when interviewing Krantz and asked in what I thought was a prosecutorial tone about any ex parte communications she had had regarding Redtail Ridge. It was well known and actually stated by Mayor Lay during the proceedings that only the interview questions were supposed to ask, the set questions. That was really a foul that, and it should have been, it should not have been done. I noticed that David Bing's was a clear favorite, although he himself admitted that he did not have any professional qualifications for this position. He was willing to take other positions, including the Urban Renewal Authority position, which I think would have been a better choice because Jeff Lipton has served many, many decades. And we are, we have a stated objective of finding newer people for boards. I do not believe that Krantz and Howe were treated fairly in this process. We need to examine this process fully for bias and make appropriate changes before Planning Commission applicants are chosen. I would like to ask that you take this item off of the agenda until the process can be examined further. I would also add an additional note, which was that when I was at the interviews, there was only one spectator and the second night there were two. So this was not a huge crowd. I had trouble hearing the first night and so I was allowed to move a little closer to the table, which was quite far from the public seating area. And the second night abruptly, in a tone that really shocked and offended me, Mayor Lay said, you need to sit in the public seating area. It was just a command. I've never seen such behavior in any public meeting in Lewisville. So I said, well, you know, I couldn't hear, so I'm happy to move if I can hear. And he said, this is not your meeting. You need to move. And Councilmember Dickinson followed up by, you need to sit in the public seating area. Neither, neither one tried to do any problem solving. No one said, well, there, you know, there's two extra people in the audience. Let's have everybody here. I felt like this was deliberately tried. It felt to me like a power play. It felt like saying, you're not welcome here. It felt like I'm in charge. And to me, this is not the kind of city that we are. We are courteous. We are civil. I have been civil. I have never lost my temper in a meeting. And I am shocked and offended by the behavior that Mayor Lay showed. And I certainly hope this is not a precedent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is, and I may butcher the last name because I can't quite reach, read it. David Chu. And I, I just can't read the, the rest of it. David, are you?
Chigala.
Chigala, thank you. That would be you.
Yeah, that would be me.
Please, sorry about that.
Horrible handwriting.
Now, this, you had on, on a card, you are, I think you said you're speaking on eighteen sixty-seven and eighteen six, pardon me? Yeah, I realized that. And that is an item on the agenda. So what I would ask is that you wait. Okay. Until we do that and then we'll have you come up. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks. The next one is David Summers. Oh, and this one is this, this is about the Marshall Fire. All right. Kim, it looks like there are a number of these. I'm gonna scoot through the ones that are Marshall Fire ones and we will, thank you for identifying that because that can help. Let's see, just a minute. Okay. All right, and let's see. I think this one is Catherine Smith from Lewisville. Please, Catherine.
Good evening. I wanted to say happy holidays to everyone and to just recognize that Lewisville's been through a lot and that our city council has worked hard for us and will continue to work hard for us. I was part of a citizens group who worked hard to, on-ballot initiative two C. And we were very excited to see that seventy percent, roughly round numbers, of Lewisville citizens voted in favor of actually increasing our open space tax. I think in this environment that that is really a strong statement, that people not only voted for the tax that we had before, but for the increase. So I want to thank the city council for going out on a limb a little bit there. I wanted to let you know that the folks who worked on two C are continuing to meet and to think about what we'd like to see happen in the open space world. I want to give a shout out to Dietrich, who I know has already been working on the separation of the monies with Jeff Durbin and staff. And I understand that it's a more complex process than I originally appreciated. I know we will. I wanted to let you know that our preliminary thoughts on sort of what should happen in open space are now that we've secured funding that really is discreet and dedicated. What we would like to see is separate departments and separate management plans for open space. And I have to tell you that when I first heard that there should be separate departments, I thought that that might be more than was needed. And I've become convinced that it actually is important because of the cultural values and how they differ between people who do parks work and people who do open space. Parks work is sort of analogous to a developer. They're looking at ways of preserving human uses and putting up structures. And it's a completely different mindset. The folks who do open space work tend to be focusing more on, is it functioning as a habitat, as an environment? Is there something that we need to do there to change it? And because there are knowledge training, skill sets, and I would say implicit biases are different, I think that encouraging the separation and recognizing those differences will get us closer to meeting the goals that are set out in our city charter. And for those of you who look occasionally at the city charter, I encourage you to look at section fifteen, which does lay out the purposes for open space. Thank you very much and happy holidays.
Thanks. It looks like the only, the last person on the list. Oh, sorry about that. Well, we'll go to them next. Hank Shaw, I'm not sure who that is, but if you could identify yourself and turn off or turn on your mic. Looks like your mic may be off. We can't hear you just yet.
Their mic is off.
How do we, what does he need to do to, probably, we can't tell him because it's his computer.
Yeah, if you can unmute your microphone, we will be able to hear you.
Lowered, okay, he lowered his hand, so.
I counsel, that was a mistake.
Okay.
It was.
Okay. Sometimes we have that. We call that a, what is it, a legacy hand or something like that. The last person on the list is Mark Painter. The item is red tail process. Okay, okay, and he's waving it off. So I think we're ready to move on. All right, thank you all for the comments. We're on to the consent agenda. There is, as I mentioned before, one change to the consent agenda. And I think other than that, we're ready to go. So do we have?
I move that we pass the consent agenda.
As amended?
As amended, thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, thanks. The next one is council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda. And it looks like the Mayor Protem has a comment.
Yeah. I'd just like to say after passing the consent agenda, it was an amazing experience. Thank you to Barbara and Dietrich for doing the first round of looking at all the applicants for the boards and commissions. And then we had maybe eight, nine hours of interviews. The residents of Lewisville are remarkable. The applicants for all of, I think, thirteen boards and commissions were remarkable. We had five members of boards not reappointed and not a single one of them because they weren't good at their job. We had so many amazing applicants for so many boards. Really exciting to see all the, all the faces and all the resumes of these people that want to serve on the, the library board and the Historic Preservation Commission. And it was really a joy. I love it every year, just watching and getting to meet all these amazing people who are willing to volunteer their time to, to serve to as, in advisory capacity. And so thank you to, to everyone who applied, even those who didn't get selected. And really excited for a really strong group of, of members in our community. So thanks for all the, all the hard work, everybody.
I would add to that only that I want to thank the Mayor Protem for handling that piece of the discussion, which we had to discuss the candidates. I thought that, that is a hard piece and you did a very nice job on that. And I wanted to call that out.
Thanks.
As well. As I've said many, many times, our, our city really would grind to a halt without the volunteers that we have. And the idea that people are willing to spend the amount of time that they do on all of these boards and commissions and come into meetings. I mean, there's a lot of other ways that people participate in the, in public engagement. And we can't thank them enough for this. So thanks to those who have served and aren't going to be and very good luck. And we look forward to working and being advised by those people who are either re-upping or continuing to serve. So thanks. Anybody else? Okay. City managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. First, I want to point out that we did recently, in the last month or so, make some changes to the rebuild dashboard on our website. And I want to clarify how this math works because even I was reading these differently than was intended. And as people started, families have started moving home, the, the, the problem there has become more apparent. So if you go to our rebuild page, there's a dashboard right on that page. There's, there's a top column, businesses, homes and businesses lost, five fifty, debris removal complete. It's the next three boxes that I want to point out. Right now, as of today, this moment anyways, after four P M, homes or units under construction reads two hundred and fifty-three. That means there are two hundred and fifty-three active building permits in the rebuild. The next box is rebuild permits under review. That's currently thirty-two. Those are permits that Rob's Building Department is reviewing and we have not yet issued a permit for. And then the next box is moved home, one eighteen as of, as of right now. Those are people who have received their COs and are able to move home. When, for example, the thirty-two under permits under review, a permit one gets issued, thirty-two becomes thirty-one, two fifty-three becomes two fifty-four. When they get their CO, two fifty-four becomes two fifty-three, one eighteen becomes one nineteen. So if you do the math on this, we are well over seventy percent of our families are well into the rebuild process, which two years in is, I think, a pretty significant milestone. And so I wanted to point out that math to make sure everybody reads that right. Second of all, I want to talk about holiday hours since.
Sorry, so.
Sure.
So the total's four hundred and three that are either moved home, currently building, or permit under review.
Correct.
Thank you.
Also with the holidays, I wanted to point out our holiday hours. This is on our website under the city calendar, but the city hall will be closed on, you know, usually in the weekends. But also Monday, December twenty-sixth and Tuesday, December, I'm sorry, Monday, December twenty-five and Tuesday, December twenty-sixth. A city hall will also be closed on Monday, January first. The public library will be closed on Sunday, the twenty-fourth, Monday, the twenty-fifth, and also closed on New Year's Day, January first. The rec center will have limited hours basically in the morning on the twenty-fourth of December, closed on Monday, the twenty-fifth, open on Tuesday and twenty-sixth, but the Brooks Cafe is closed. And then, let's see, and then open the thirty-first and the first with some limited hours. Coal Creek Golf Course is, Coal Creek Golf Course is closed on December twenty-five and January one. Again, these are all listed on our website. So just wanted to make sure people are, are looking for that because we do have some limited hours. And I wanted to give a huge thank you to our building official, Chad Root. Chad has volunteered on his own to do building inspections all the way through December, the evening of December twenty-fourth, Christmas Eve. So over the holidays, he has volunteered to do building inspections. That's how dedicated our building department is to moving, to helping people move home. So big shout out if you, if you see Chad, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That, that is just all told, really, really good news. One of the things I, I wanted to, to mention is I know, we all know that the anniversary of the fire is coming up and that's a huge stress and burden for a lot of people. And frankly, the holidays are a burden and stress for almost everybody, but sometimes a really difficult time for, for some folks. But I appreciate the dedication of the staff to trying to get people home as quickly as can. I know that, that people are very anxious about trying to get there before their ALE runs out. And to your point, I, I just wanted to highlight that, that seventy percent number is really astonishing. And it's, it is, as I understand it, from the comparative figures, particularly California compared to us because California has a lot of, a lot of fires and some multiple fires in the same communities. But that, that number is much higher, much faster. And the other thing that I think is really important, and I don't want to underestimate this, is that often what happens is different people move in. Different people who are a whole different economic situation and often sort of gentrifying everything. That is, that's something that we have, we have a lot of the same people moving back who lost their homes and not everybody. And there are certainly new people that are going to be moving in and we're going to welcome them too. But that's a really important trend, I think, that, that speaks well for this community. Speaks really well for the survivors of the fire, that they care that much about their, their neighborhoods, their people, the community. The other thing, and I'm taking time in yours, is I think we had a whole bunch of people who applied this year who were fire survivors for boards and commissions. And that is terrific, including one, well, one who's been selected for the, for Planning Commission. And that's a, that's a statement of faith that somebody would join that committee or that board and be willing to look ten years into the future. That, that is very moving for me. So anyway, I appreciate your calling attention to that, Jeff. All right, any other questions for, yes, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a clarifying question for you, city manager, and apologies if I missed this as I was following around in your calculations. Do those numbers include smoke damage as well? Is it a certain type of permit or all permits associated with these areas?
These are homes that were lost.
Complete loss?
Yeah, the smoke damage, insulation permits. It was around 1,600, is that right?
And yes, we had about 1,400 so far that are other types of damage other than a total loss. The vast majority were insulation of those 1,400.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. And the last comment I'll make, I know we've mentioned this before, is I would love to continue to investigate what resources that 30% needs. It's likely, I suspect, different than the initial cohort that's rebuilding and getting their certificates of occupancy. So I think as a council, it's important that we commit to that data and figure out how we can support those individuals as well.
Appreciate that and we are working on that as well.
Of course you are. You guys are magnificent. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Yes?
I'll just add my thanks to everything that the staff has done to make the rebuild process as easy and financially doable as it has been. It's been amazing to me to see how many people are able to move back home or just to rebuild, even if they're not finished rebuilding yet, to just be confident enough to take that step. The process has been just amazing. And then to have the public works go and tell Maui how to do it, that just blows my mind that we have an amazing staff at all levels that are doing amazing work. Thank you.
Thank you. And I was just looking for, bear with me for just a moment. Our next item is regular business. Item A is proclamation of National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And the police chief, Kateris, is here. I don't know whether he has a presentation to make or comments, but I welcome him to the microphone.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I don't have a formal presentation, but National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day was started back in 2015. It was primarily driven through the concern of police survivors as a way to show communities' appreciation for their law enforcement professionals. And I think this is a, this goes a long way to the officers and professional staff of the police department, just to say that council and the community do support what they do. They do have a difficult job, but they're out there dedicated day in and day out to make sure that the quality of life in Lewisville is upheld and that people feel safe in this community. So thank you.
And we appreciate, this is your first National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day with us, so welcome again. We have a proclamation which I'm going to read and then I'll ask for motion to, I guess, make that official. But I'll read it now. This is a proclamation for National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Whereas National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day was founded in 2015 to recognize officers across the country for the daily sacrifices they make for the communities and whereas National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day is observed on Tuesday, January 9th, 2024, and observance of the day are encouraged to support law enforcement officers by wearing blue and turning on blue lights at their homes. And whereas the health and safety of the residents, visitors, and businesses of the city of Lewisville, Colorado are important to quality of life in our community and whereas the city of Lewisville, Colorado is the proud home of dedicated law enforcement officers who put their lives on the line to keep the community safe. And whereas we appreciate the extraordinary efforts and sacrifices made by law enforcement officers and their family members on a daily basis in order to protect our homes, workplaces, roadways, and places of recreation. Whereas the, and whereas the well-being of the city of Lewisville, Colorado residents is preserved and enhanced as a direct result of the vigilance of law enforcement officers. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of this city of Lewisville, Colorado, that January 9th, 2024 is proclaimed as National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Can I have a motion to accept the proclamation?
So moved. Second.
Voice vote on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is the use tax exemption for homes damaged in the Marshall Fire, second reading, which is public hearing. So I'm going to introduce, I think we're going to introduce the first item? And I'll introduce them both? Okay. The first is ordinance number 1867, series 2023, an ordinance exempting construction materials from the city's use tax for building permits issued for reconstruction of homes damaged or destroyed in the Marshall Fire burn area, second reading. And ordinance number 1868, series 2023, an ordinance adopting by reference the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code as an alternative for the repair and rebuilding of homes that sustained smoke, heat, water, ash, or other damage as a result of the Marshall Fire, also a second reading. Any disclosure, well, let's see, let me open the hearing. Any disclosures from anyone? Yes.
I'll just disclose, I have a home that was, had extensive smoke and ash damage as a result of the fire, but I will participate in the discussion and vote.
I suppose I should disclose that I have also had smoke damage, although it's been insured, so I'm not going to be voting on anything that's going to affect my situation. Is there any other person who has a disclosure?
Probably just that I did lose my house in the fire and have actively worked in other means outside of council to assist people who were partial losses, smoke damage, and total loss.
All right. Open the public hearing. Let's start with staff presentation from, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Lay, members of city council, Rob Zuccaro. I'm the community development director for the city. I'm going to be presenting on this item. We talked a little bit about this earlier in the meeting. There were 550 properties that had total loss as part of the fire, 549 residences in one commercial property. These ordinances aren't addressing those properties. They're addressing the other properties that sustained a full range of damage that wasn't direct fire damage. We do have some properties, in addition to those 550, that were partially burned. They were covered under the previous ordinances we passed. So these are properties that did not sustain direct fire damage. We have over 1,400 of these properties that have varying degrees of damage that we're aware of at this time. They have unique challenges and it's not always obvious, especially from an insurance standpoint, that they have coverable damage. And so there are unique financial and other challenges for some of these properties. Of the four, we've, of the 1,400 or so permits we've issued, the majority have been just for insulation replacement, but we have dozens and dozens of others that had more extensive damage that could require drywall being removed, siding being removed, definitely heat damage to windows, roofs, those were all very common damages that were sustained that weren't direct burn to the structure. So there's quite a bit of demand. So as you all know, the city passed an ordinance previously for the total losses or those that had fire damage for use tax, city use tax exemption. They also passed an ordinance that allowed for those rebuilding to exempt out of the 2021 energy code and allowed them to build under the 2018 energy code. So the two ordinances before you really just take those ordinances that were applied to the full loss or the structures that sustained direct fire damage and extends it to any property that had any type of damage from the fire. It could be from wind or smoke or ash or heat. Water damage was very common as well. So any really type of damage that could be linked to the fire, these ordinances would extend the use tax exemption and then the opt-out to the energy code. For insulation permits, it's probably on average about a $70 use tax benefit. For the more extensive rebuilds, it could be thousands of dollars if you're having to redo your, all of your insulation and your drywall and your siding and your windows and your roof. It could be thousands of dollars of financial support. The exemption from the building code to go from the 21 to the 18, there are, the main things are there's some, there's some insulation values that go down, so it's a little more affordable for some of the insulation requirements. Your furnace can be a little bit less efficient, so that's a little bit more affordable as well. So there's some cost savings there as well that could be realized. So in order to qualify for both of these exemptions that are being proposed with this ordinance, you had to be the homeowner when the fire occurred and you're making the repairs. So it has to be the same homeowner. You have to apply before December 31st, 2024, so that's the end of next year. That's the same deadline for the full rebuilds that we established. And then you have to attest on your application that you're seeking the exemption due to financial hardship due to inadequate insurance coverage. It's the same exemption that we required for the fire damage and the full rebuilds. We're not requiring any type of documentation. The state use tax, for example, is the same way. You can self-attest that you have this financial hardship, so that's how it would be administered. Again, there's two ordinances before you, one related to the use tax, one related to the building code opt-out. We took the same language from the previous ordinances and made some slight modifications. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, director. Questions from council? Go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation. I have a clarifying question to make sure I'm understanding the deadline correctly. So, building permit prior to December 31st, 2024. So what does that mean for those who have already submitted and paid between the damage and today?
Yeah, they could apply for a refund. Yeah, and so we've done it both ways with the rebuilds. We've given credits when a permit's being issued or we've given refunds. So we already have some processes, processes established to do it either way.
Okay, thank you.
Following on from that, there's a difference, right, between a credit and a refund, I think, in terms of tax impact? Is that your understanding?
Yes, I think there are probably some distinctions and I may not be using the language correctly. And I know the way we established it with the original program for it to be a credit, I think, is our intention rather than a refund.
Okay, yeah, because I, my recollection is that if we make it a credit, there's no tax impact and if we make it a rebate, potentially there is. So if we can, you know, and I understand we're trying to make this sort of similar to what we've done elsewhere.
It's intended to be a credit, but if somebody's already paid it, then that, we'll have to do the credit after the fact.
There, go ahead. We can come back with other questions. Did you have questions? Any other, yeah?
I'm wondering if this is the same process or requirements that the state is offering on their use tax rebate? Because they also will rebate or refund, I'm not sure what, a use tax on just fire-impacted homes that weren't destroyed.
So my understanding from the state use tax credit is that it has to have, so are you asking if it's fire damage versus smoke damage? Is the state use tax credit also available for smoke damage?
Right.
Yeah. I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to open up the criteria to be sure. I don't know that we've received any applications for smoke damage on those.
I was given the information that the state sales tax refund includes smoke and ash damage also.
Okay, yeah. I'm not aware, but we can confirm if you want us to do any additional confirmation.
Okay, thank you.
I got a similar message and I think it comes from the person who actually drafted the legislation, our former council member, Brown. But, all right, other questions? One further question I have is, we've, we're attempting to cover a whole, you know, different groups that were affected by the fire. One of the groups we have not kind of dealt with, I think, is renters. This particular, these two ordinances don't deal with use tax. I don't know, to be honest, whether there is an impact on renters of the smoke damage that might implicate use tax, but I just wondered if that was considered at all.
Not in these ordinances. They're really going to apply to the homeowner or the property owner. If it wasn't rental property, it's really the property owner that would benefit from these.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we're going to go to a first round of public comments. And I've got quite a few public comments, which is good. First is, actually, yeah, Tanya Samaru. State your name and address or your, not address, but whether you're in Lewisville.
Okay, I'm Tanya Samaru. I'm a Lewisville resident displaced from Cornerstone to Short Place right now. So I lost my house in the fire and I was here talking to you a lot about use tax relief. Supposed to have, my husband is also joined, so it's out of time, but okay. So, talking about smoke damage, toxic substance damage, and thermal damage to homes. So this is a huge problem and there are some other people who can talk about it more technically. I just want to say that it's well acknowledged that repairing and remediating homes in a fire disaster is a huge problem. As we just mentioned, the state use tax that was recently passed, relief includes these damaged homes as well. At the state level, Kyle Brown also passed a bill for renters last, in the last session, so that if you're living in a smoke damaged home, your landlord needs to remediate it or you can break the, the warranty of habitability apply. At the moment, Kyle and Judy, Representative Brown and Judy Amable are working on creating a task force, I think through the DOI, that would look at how to create regulations and remediate. So they're looking at how do we actually create some standards for how to do this because there aren't any. Our fire was unique. There was another urban fire that happened in California, but maybe it wasn't as big a problem. We are kind of at the forefront of the urban mega-fire. And what we're doing here is, is leading in the country. Recently, the fire happened in Lahaina. They have huge smoke damage problems there. They're going to be looking at what we did here in the state of Colorado and in places like Lewisville to help people get home. So as I understand it, Superior has granted use tax relief to damaged homes. And I also want to mention that Community Foundation, like, pretty instantly included the damaged homes in the rebuild fund when they found out that there were dozens and dozens of people who were stuck with hellish situations where they don't have the money to do it or they're, they can't figure out how to do it and people can't explain those circumstances more. I just want to talk about last year, we came here and we talked about use tax relief. We talked about people being underinsured, the need for it. In this damaged home community, they have the same funding shortfalls and for a lot of complicated, more complicated. and for a lot of complicated, more complicated reasons. I want to point out that we argued that the city budget, you know, the use tax from the fire was sort of a windfall that wasn't anticipated. And we understand that 30% of the town is going to be rebuilt by investors. So the city's still getting a good amount of use tax from those rebuilt homes. The financial impact of this ordinance is, is pretty small. It's like more than 100,000, it's less than 150, isn't it? And it's like 0.3% of the annual budget.
I think your time is, oh, wait, wait.
She's pooling her time with her spouses online.
Sorry.
So I want to point out that there are even more important reasons to grant this use to, use tax relief for Louisville. One is that remediating homes is super important. There are families that could not figure this out. In the case of a full, total loss fire survivor, when you rebuild your home, it's new and you, you get some, maybe you, you, you might get back some of your shortfall in home value when you're done rebuilding. But if you're repairing a home, you're just getting back the house you had and you're not really getting, I mean, you're really not making up what you've lost. There's no chance to do that. You can't change the features of your house and it's not going to be a 2021 total code house. We don't want these homes in our community that are not remediated. We want all these homes that are especially problematic to be fully remediated as much as possible. That's, it's like a toxic bomb in your community and you could have the next family buying and the next family are renters and they could have health problems. We don't want that. I want to say that the impact of having to fight for the use tax relief for the total loss survivors was really hard. It was traumatizing for the community, it was emotional. And a lot of people were left with the, with the feeling that Louisville is fine without you. People said that, in fact. And, you know, some of the council members here have worked really hard to connect with the community and rebuild our trust. You know, there was a recall erection, election that sort of had something to do with that probably. I mean, it, it left really bad feelings in the community that we felt like we had to fight really hard for that. I would hope that, in my experiences in the Marshall Together admin, the people with damaged homes that are still not home and still don't have a path to get home are the most traumatized members of our community. So please spare them and, and help them out. Every little bit helps to get home. So we, they've been living with uncertainty for two years. The impact of this on the budget is really a pittance. And these people are the absolute best people in our community because they're working so hard to remediate their homes and they're, they're doing it because they want to get home and because they belong here and they want to have their kids in school next door. And, you know, I think they deserve our acknowledgement and respect for their hard work. So please grant both of these ordinances because we want every single family home. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's see, next is Jeffrey Hart. Jeffrey?
Thank you, Council. My name is Jeffrey Hart. I'm a resident of Louisville. I live just south of Rec Center, or at least I did until the fire. My home survived the fire, but sustained high levels of smoke and ash damage. Around my house, 65 homes burned to the ground. Since that time, you've attempted to, attempted to take my family back to the house, resulted in quick illnesses, quick restaurant issues, the night, half hour being inside the house. We've had extensive environmental testing done and it's off the charts many areas. As you may or may not know, insurance knows there's no protocol, no set standard as to what to do for a smoke damaged house. As such, they've been highly resistant to offer coverage for this because the liability didn't incur. Myself and numerous of my neighbors have been going through the legal process trying to recover some funds from the insurance companies. Most of them are behind me on the curve. After a year-long struggle, my wife and I came to a settlement with our insurance company that admittedly probably 25 cents to the dollar for what's required. But short of a five or six-year wait to go through the legal process and inherent risk with that, it was the most equitable arrangement we could find. The, the house is not going to be safe to live in until it's fixed. There's no doubt about that. We've just started the demo process, our actual rebuild process is in review right now. Fingers crossed it comes out quickly. As they started demoing the house, we found more and more damage I've expected inside the walls. Entire sections of the insulation are black through the entire depth of it from smoke, piles of ash between the walls. The workers who hate wearing masks are wearing masks during the demo because they, even they recognize the, the risk inherent with this. I want my family home, but I need them home safely. It's going to be a large financial burden, but I will find a way to make it happen because that one needs to be done for my family. I'm just asking for some consideration to help me get my family home to the neighborhood I love and the community I love in Louisville. Anything you can do to help that would be greatly appreciated. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next is Jerry Curry. Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm Jerry Curry, the Executive Director of Marshall Rock, which is the Marshall Fire Long-Term Recovery Group. I'm also now leading the Smoke and Ash, Standing, Smoke and Ash and Standing Home Task Force, which is made up of survivors, state and local government agency representatives and our elected leaders who are really forcefully leading the charge on this. Households who have extensive smoke, ash and thermal damage are really struggling in their recovery. I'm familiar with the entire landscape of the recovery and these are some of our toughest cases that we see on a daily basis. The challenges are similar to those whose homes were destroyed. However, in some ways, it's even more difficult. People question whether, them at every step of the way, whether they really did have as much damage. They feel lesser than, their home is still standing and so they feel guilty. It's a wide range of challenges that they're faced with. The insurance companies are rejecting the majority of claims, blaming it on the lack of clear HUD standards, which is why Representative Brown and Representative Ambele are both fighting for that. There's no, there's no HUD standard on smoke damage, which we find quite shocking. But when I sat across from HUD, they looked at me and said, "This is new." I found that surprising. They also blame the, they say that their industrial hygienists, the insurance companies, are the authoritative voice. And just as an example, they basically refute anyone else that brings in an industrial hygienist that says something different, which can be incredibly discouraging. I am so grateful for the support of the city and for one of the partners that's sitting to my right right now, Rob, and his planning and permitting department. They have worked tirelessly to move this forward and to move permitting forward for everyone. And without them, we would be stuck. 1,400 permits don't happen overnight and it's been a lot of work. And he's continued. We spent two hours on the phone basically today talking about a lot of this, trying to figure out how we can help. He's always said, "I can help," and he lost his own home. The households have been recognized and are now equally included in the federally funded DOLA-led housing recovery program, the Community Foundation rebuild funding. The Town of Superior has included these types of households in their tax rebate program. And we do believe and have on good authority that Boulder County will likely include these households in their use tax rebate based on a positive outcome on this ordinance vote tonight. These households with moderate to severe smoke and ash damage already feel left behind. Passing both ordinances on the agenda will go a long way in supporting this group of residents and will certainly help them move forward. I appreciate your time. I also offer my assistance to you, Barbara, your point earlier on how we can identify and help those that are really struggling. We know some of them sold their homes. We also know many just need help from the mental health aspect of this. And Marshall Rock is working with our partners to do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And thank you for the Rock's work generally. Tamara Chigala. Did I pronounce your name right?
Yeah, thank you.
Good, thanks.
So yeah, Tamara, and we, I mean, in Louisville, and smoke damaged home, severely smoked damaged home. So I'm asking that you please support both ordinances. In the beginning, we thought, oh, wow, it's, it's survived, only shortly to realize that we wish it had burned. We had attended a neighborhood potluck and people up the street said, "Oh, you're the one. Oh, you poor thing." And we are still not back in our house. We've had an industrial hygienist come and just what was previously mentioned is that the insurance company denies the industrial hygienist report. When I asked the industrial hygienist, "How does our house rank within all the homes tested in the area?" And it was said, "By far, you are the worst." And so that was really disheartening. And we have not gotten our insurance, the, the full coverage. We keep fighting and waiting and fighting and waiting and waiting and waiting. And we're not sure how we can afford to remediate correctly if they don't pay the policy premiums. I mean, excuse me, if they don't pay, you know, in, in full. But it has just been such a huge stress and financial hardship. And we have invited so many different entities to come see the house. Look for yourself. Yes, it's still standing, but take a look inside. Soot pouring out of the, ceiling, pouring out of the walls. So much damage, super toxic. And nobody would come to our house. We invited so many. Insurance, they're, they're not paying. And we do feel like so many different programs don't apply to smoke damaged home people and that we've just been left behind. So many professionals that have come to the house, I, I can't believe that your, you know, your insurance didn't just scrape the house and start over. We're at ground zero, we're the only house still standing, definitely damaged to the house. And so we're just, we just feel so stuck and it's been a huge financial burden, especially since insurance is not paying our policy limits. We're just really, you know, could use any support in any area that we possibly can. And there's no other place that we want to live besides Louisville. We're trying desperately to get back. So thank you so much for listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kimberly Redublato. Did I get that right? Okay. People mispronounce my name all the time, so I'm trying to make a concerted effort to get it right with other people.
Thank you, it's Redublato in Colorado. Hello, my name is Kimberly Redublato and I'm a Louisville resident. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of our family of five and for other families with partial loss at homes still struggling. We ask that the city pass the two ordinances being discussed tonight, 1867 and 1868. Our home in Louisville was damaged by the Marshall Fire. No one is living in it. It's standing there with nothing but old furniture and some toys. The fire burned homes to their foundations directly in front of us, right behind us and adjacent to the west, maybe 25 feet away from our west side. The firefighters held the line at our home. Everything from miles to the west was destroyed and the neighboring houses to the east saved. We had apparent burning, melting, water damage, scorching and breaking. We lost our brand-new landscaping and 30-year-old trees. There was a smell of char and a stunning horrible stench of chemicals through our home. The Christmas tree stood in the cold and dark for weeks. The following details demonstrate our financial hardship, which would be aided by the two ordinances on the table tonight. We first attempted cleaning the structure and contents. This approach took approximately $85,000 of our insurance coverage. And there's, there is no grace. Whether it worked or not, this money is gone. We have also paid or owe over $10,000 out of pocket for industrial hygienists to test our home. Insurance did not pay for these, though we asked for reimbursement. These reports identified fire particulates in our walls and ceiling cavities. We have asked for an insurer to remediate within the cavities, but to date, they have not. They stopped paying our ALE in December 2022 despite us having 24 months' coverage. We are already financially so behind right off the starting block from even where total loss families got to start and their situation was bad. We are underinsured based on this and based on the estimates we have for full remediation and repair. We are also strictly speaking underinsured based on being unable to secure policy benefits for this loss. Other families with partial losses too are unable to secure policy benefits, rendering them also underinsured, whether for a roof, carpeting, encapsulation or removal and rebuild of drywall. Exemption from the 2021 building codes would make it feasible or even possible to retrofit our 1992 structure. The user tax rebate will help us to financially recover somewhat in the end. We ask that the city grant us the assistance already shown to the families with total losses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. David, David Summers?
Hello, my name is David Summers. I am a resident of Louisville. Me and my family were deeply impacted by the Marshall Fire. Like Kimberly, all of our neighbors' houses burned down. Our house only stands because of the efforts of the firefighters that decided to, to make our house the line in the sand and worked tirelessly all night to save it. The closest house was 10 feet away from my house that was burned to the foundation. It burned our landscaping shed, melted the windows, charred the siding on the back of the house, filled all the wall cavities with soot and ash. To, to repair the damage, we had to replace the siding, the roof, all the windows. We had to tear the, the house down to the bare studs from the outside, remove the siding, sheathing, insulation, and then replaced all that. We had no ordinance and law coverage in our insurance. We were left with a large insurance gap. We were lucky in that we had savings, so we paid out of pocket to get back into our house. We were out of our house for an entire year. We moved back in on the one-year anniversary of the fire. Part of that gap is over $1,000 in city use taxes that I paid in my permits and more than $10,000 in energy efficiency upgrades. There is no easy way to upgrade a house built in 1992 with 2x4 walls to modern Energy Code. You have to make the walls thicker. And that doesn't sound complicated, but when you look at the outside of your house, every light fixture has to move out, every outlet needs, has to be re-toed. Every hose faucet has to be relocated, sprinkler valves. It really snowballs whenever you make the walls thicker. You have to take out all your windows and remount them outboard flush with the walls. It, it is very complicated to upgrade a house built with 2x4 walls. Modern houses are built with 2x6s. It's, it's an easier prospect. So I ask you to pass both of these ordinances. It will help me, it'll, my family, it'll help people get back into homes. I also wanted to talk to something that Tanya talked about, which is non-remediated homes. There are some people at this point that I walked through the neighborhood, houses are still dark. Houses have had Christmas lights up for two years now because the families never come back. And that's sad enough, but the scary thing is we're starting to see for sale signs in these houses. And so anything we can do to help make sure these houses get remediated and that it's safe for families to live in, I ask you to please do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, just a second here. David Chigala. Thanks for coming back.
Hey, you're welcome. Thanks for having me back. David Chigala, I'm a, I'm a resident of Louisville, Colorado. I could pretty much say ditto to what we've heard here tonight. It's pretty much a sad story and a common story. Our house was the only one left standing in our neighborhood. We thought it was a blessing. It turned out to be a real curse if we, from a purely financial and insurance standpoint, if we could wish something different, we would wish that our house burnt down to the ground with everything in it. Because... Because the two years that we've been going through this hasn't been worth it.
Take your time. Take your time. Stop the clock, if you would.
It's just robbed our lives, our time. And I know everybody else has gone through the same thing. But, thank you. Yeah, we just, bottom line is, we just need all the help we can get, just like everybody else. You know, our insurance basically came in. The adjuster said, I've never done fires before. I've only done hurricanes and water. And his basic end game was painted, encapsulated, and it'll be fine. We weren't going to put up with that, so we tore out everything because we aren't going to live in a toxic house. As we tore things out, we found piles of soot in the 2x4s this high, within the insulation, within the 2x4s, within the drywall. That's not pre-loss condition, you know? It's just not. It's insane what the insurance companies are doing with all of us. And I, for the life of me, I don't know how they can get away with it. I mean, I made a Department of Insurance complaint, and they said, nothing we can do. There's no industry standard. I said, who's regulating who? You know? I have a license in this state. If I act unethically, I get it pulled. I don't get to work here anymore. The insurance companies, they do whatever they want, and they have to all of us. And it's just nothing short of criminal. We hired an industrial hygienist for $12,000 to thoroughly inspect our house. Her synopsis was, tear it down. It's so toxic, nobody should live in this house. Insurance says, paint it and encapsulate it, everything will be fine. I mean, that's how far away we are. And in dollars, that amounts to, pretty close to a million dollars, you know? So with the help of our construction company, we've been able to get a little bit more money out of our insurance, but it's been a fight every step of the way. We've been doing nothing these last two years but fighting, fighting, fighting with insurance. When we have enough insurance coverage to take care of us, the insurance just won't pay for it. So we're not underinsured. We, you know, I upped our insurance about a year beforehand, and we're not underinsured. It's just the insurance company won't let go of it. And when I upped our insurance coverage, I really thought, we're safe, we're covered. And nothing could be further from the truth. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Jeremy Dunning. I'm a resident here in Louisville. I'm going to try not to get emotional because the speeches that came before me just resonate with my family's situation as well. Mayor, I heard you speak earlier on the idea of dedication and how dedicated, excuse me...
Just take your time.
How dedicated the residents that are before you tonight and in this town are to move back in. Those of us who have been severely impacted by smoke, soot, ash, our houses are inhabitable. You've heard about insurance gaps. You've heard about how the rebuild process is very different than the remediation process. David spoke about how in order to bring a house up to code that was built in 1992 is a near impossible task. I can't tell you that my situation is any different. I wish I could, but every step of remediation, you go... You go multiple steps deeper, financially, emotionally, trying to solve problems one after another, that there are no answers to. Hygienists sometimes don't have the answers, builders don't have the answers, insurance doesn't have the answers. It is a constant battle of problem solving. It takes endless time and energy. In a time when these residents, including myself, are so dedicated to living in this town, to being parts of our community, and to just try to get back to what we had, I encourage the council to consider both of these ordinances in helping us in one small step to what seems to be almost an impossible task forward. Thank you.
Next is Reina Palmeroy.
Good evening. I'm Reina Palmeroy. I'm at 112 Vista, hopefully in about a week. I'm a total loss survivor. Megafire is a new thing. It's six years old. We are setting a precedent tonight. This council is going to set a precedent tonight. My house was one of the last ones on my block to burn, meaning the rest of the neighborhood, severe smoke damage. Some of my neighbors were home a year later, some of my neighbors are not yet home. The ambiguity for this community, unlike for my situation, is so real. They don't know what comes next because this industry is so unregulated. Like Jerry said, HUD doesn't know what the standard ought to be. This is an impossible situation for people to live in. There is very little FEMA and SBA and additional financial support out there for these groups. And it makes it really complicated to find financial assistance to be able to make it back to zero, not even better, just to zero. I just returned from Lahaina, Maui, that was devastated by the fire, with the after-the-fire delegation. That community is looking to us. They're looking to see what we're going to do. This is a really important decision. That community amongst so many others that are going to follow will have severe smoke damage like our community. Megafire, unfortunately, is going to continue, and I think the decisions that we make today are really important. I would like to compel the council to vote on the side of getting our families home. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, unless, let's see, we have one online, and I think it's Hank Shaw? That was...
Hi. It's Joanne Spears using Hank Shaw's computer. I would like to... My name's Joanne Spears, and my husband and I lost our home in the fire, and we're rebuilding and very much appreciate the relief and the support we received to date. I'm just here to speak in support of the passage of the two ordinances, 1867 and 1868. And as you've already heard, the folks who spoke tonight are really struggling. These are our neighbors, and I believe it's very important to show our support. And I urge the city council to provide the relief from the use in the 2020 energy code. It's just the compassionate thing to do. And that's why I've listened tonight. I just think it's so important for us to bring these folks home as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others who haven't yet spoken? I think that's all we have online. Anybody else in the gallery? Thank you very much. I'm going to turn, we can turn back to council questions, or actually, we've got a council question and a certain amount of discussion, and then we can take a second round of public Yeah. Yes, council member.
I think at the beginning, I was thinking like, my brain, you know, don't worry, you don't have to, you don't have to make a big appeal. Just let us talk, and it's all going to be good. And I'm so glad that you all got to speak because, you know, I have friends in your situation, and it's, it's really intense and a different, it's all sorts of trauma, right? But a different kind of trauma. And I think, you know, not being seen as having that same level of trauma is an extra trauma, right? And I think it was a huge oversight on our part, and I was on council, so I take ownership for that. And it was, it was an accidental oversight. This idea that, you know, insurance should cover us for what we lost, and if you didn't, if your house wasn't burned to the foundation, you should be okay, right? Like, as you said, I have enough insurance. They just have to say yes. And the idea that they wouldn't say yes is so offensive. And so the idea that you'd be underinsured is like, well, they're fine, like, they'll be insured enough. And so I think it was a mistake to not include those homes in the onset of our programs here. But I just want, you know, you all to know that, yeah, that I have heard from many people that sentiment, I wish it had just burned down. Because of an insurance company? Like, how dumb is that? Like, just because you didn't get the support that you needed? Like, the reason it's worse isn't because it's worse. It shouldn't be worse. It should be better. And because we don't have the support of the world around us, it's worse. It's so wrong. But what we're talking about tonight is just including all those families into what we are already trying to do, which is, the little piece we can do is make it easier. It's not, it's a drop in the bucket, you know, the use tax rebate. For some of you, like the insulation, like, you don't even, you're already done, like, you're not going to go back and do a different insulation. So whether it's the code or the use tax rebate, it's not, it's not the dollars, right? It's the compassion, and that's kind of... So I am so happy to hear from all of you and that you made me cry. And the number of people in the room that are teary-eyed, right? It's hard not to be. And so thank you for being vulnerable, and thank you for sharing your experience, and I'm so sorry for everything you've been through. And a huge thanks to staff for doing the work to get us to this point today. And again, from me personally, just one of your council members, an apology for how long this has taken. This, in retrospect, should have come a lot faster and sooner, and I apologize for that. But I think the only, the only issues with the actual ordinance in front of us is just, you know, yeah, a reminder that, you know, for those of you who just had simple insulation work done, $70, $80, $100 in use taxes is probably not worth your time to spend our staff's time to redo the entire thing to try to get 80 bucks back. This is really, this is, I think, why we're here today, is for the people that we're talking about, the people that are really struggling and aren't in their homes and are really having to lose a lot of money in this situation and are underinsured. So I am so happy that this is back. I'm sorry that I got, it's difficult to speak, but I, thank you all for your contribution to the conversation.
Thanks. Right, Karen?
Thank you very much. I had to touch Councilman Dickinson. I'm a hugger, as a lot of you know. So, almost got up and hugged him in front of y'all. So, but thank you for actually showing that support to our residents. I have also spent the last two years suffering with all of you, not, not, being in the room and seeing you and hearing you every single day for the last two years. So, goes without saying, you have my endless love and support, compassion. And I would like to say, just in the perspective of Louisville and making a statement, if that's something that we, maybe I should say, it seems to be something that we enjoy doing as a community. We make statements, we like to be leaders in a lot of ways. This is how you lead. You love your neighbor. You show them how much you care about them. And as a community and as a city, this is what we can do. We can come together, and we can be what we say we are today. I just, I cannot implore every one of you to feel what I do about this. The greatness of Louisville can be spread around the globe. It can be spread to the people in Hawaii so that they can see what we do. We can set so many examples. We do it in a lot of ways. Let's be there for each other. The financial impact may or may not be really substantial, but I wanted to thank Representatives Brown, Amobley, and Senator Fenberg for remembering to put this into the state use tax relief bill. I really appreciate that all of you who are impacted, all of us who are impacted, will get some help and have some measure of relief, as well as, I think we should have it, from the city of Louisville. Good luck to all of you. We'll all come home. Thank you.
Sure. First of all, thank you to everyone who showed up here in chambers, who showed up online to make comments about this agenda item. In my mind, this is a no-brainer. I do have a question, though, about the deadline of December 31st, 2024. I think, from what I understand in your presentation, it aligns with the deadline that we had created for the total loss. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I see a nod. So after hearing these stories about the lack of industry standards, the drawn-out legal processes, and the mental health challenges that come along with navigating this process, I'm sitting up here wondering, is that a reasonable deadline? And I know it would deviate from, you know, the previous ordinance, ordinances that were passed for the total losses, but I'm concerned that this might not be long enough if these families are already having challenges navigating years after. Is a one-year deadline from today going to be enough for them? And I'm asking that because some of the requirements in this are that it be the original owner, et cetera, et cetera. So it's our neighbor. So why do we have to put a one-year deadline on it unless there's a good reason that we have to? So I just want to bring that up for discussion.
I'm just going to echo what everyone else has said. This is a very difficult time for people, equally, whether you... whether you lost your home entirely or you just had the damage that was not covered by insurance. You gotta love the insurance companies. I'm also concerned about people who can't afford to do the mitigation in their homes. And what happens to those homes? Are we going to have a whole community of homes that are inhabitable and have a reputation for having homes that you just can't live in anymore? They're not safe. And so I also am fully in favor of both of these ordinances. I think that everyone needs to get the help that they can get so we can bring Louisville back to being the wonderful place it's always been. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be brief, but I do wanna thank everyone for coming and for the moving comments. Really incredible to hear all the experiences. And as, as somebody who's been through a, a shorter version myself, I, I know how difficult it is and how problematic the insurance companies can be. So thank you for sharing your stories. I, I'm also sympathetic to the, the deadline issue that Counselor Hamilton raised and think that probably warrants further discussion or maybe a weigh-in from staff. And I also just wanna echo Counselor Dickinson's point that we're a little late in doing this. And it, and it's really, I mean, frankly, it's, it's not that much. You know, I hope it helps. I hope it's something. But it's, as much as anything, a gesture. And I hope the gesture is appreciated. But I, you know, I wish there was more that the city could do to, to help the situation because it's just so difficult.
I, I appreciate the comments around the timing because I, because I share the Mayor Protem's sort of comments about that we're, we're late to the party on this. And I'm sorry. Because I know some people who've, who've been in their homes and who've said just what we've heard tonight, which is better that they had burned than to have to deal with this sort of trap. And it, it, it does remind me sometimes of, you know, we, we compare pain, right? It's all a bunch of negative integers. And really high ones or, or low ones, I guess. And I, I think these ordinances is certainly the least we can do. But I, I do think that because we are late to the party, I, I guess I would, I would be inclined to wanna add an extra year to the time period just right away. And then, and frankly, to revisit the issue if, if there's, if the people who are talking about these issues have, have these problems next year. I mean, I, I just think we need to be mindful, mindful of that. But I think, out of the box, I, I think we should add an extra year to that period. I just don't think we, you know, the, the fiscal impact, I, I don't know whether it's gonna change. I know that there's, you know, there are future permits that we don't have a number for right now. I believe, at least a staff memo suggested that. But I, I really do think that that, you know, we, we gave relief to the people who, who lost their entire homes a year and a half ago. And so it seems to me only, only fair that we, we add that. But I, I don't know whether staff has any comment about that possibility.
No, I, I think from staff's standpoint, extending it another year, I don't see any issues with that from our standpoint.
And I, I think the other thing is I just really thank you all for coming and for being so civil to us. Because frankly, I could understand. And we've had, we've had moments with survivors where, you know, the emotions are very raw. They're very raw tonight. But frankly, I don't, I don't know whether I'd be as calm as many of you if I'd been anywhere close to through what you've gone through. So, but anyway, we'll, what I'd like to do is to take a second round of public comments. If folks have any ideas. The, the one thing I would say is I don't know that we've closed the book on this one, even with the ordinances that we hope and I certainly am intending to support. I think there may be, there may be something in the future we might be able to think about. Because these, the thing that bothers me in talking about some of this is the fact that these are dangerous places in our community. They're dangerous. People are not gonna go back in them. And we, we're gonna have to think through all of that. That may be something. I, I was very appreciative, and I know we've got at least one member of the trustees of the Community Foundation in the room, that I really appreciated that the foundation didn't treat folks who had smoke and ash damage differently and, and gave them some relief. I, I know that it wasn't, you know, it wasn't the kind of relief that's gonna get you the whole way. But I thought that was an extremely solid move. And, and I think they did that some time ago. I mean, it's not new. So, Raina, thank you. Raina Palmeroy is on the Board of Trustees. So I, I appreciate that and I hope that you will share that with the trustees, just how much we appreciate that and other support that they provided. Why don't, why don't we take a second round? If anybody would like to, to speak again or whatnot about anything we've talked about, please come up and you have another three minutes. Yes, Ms. Emru?
Hi, Catherine Smith. I've just been listening and thinking about my own experience with smoke remediation. And I think one year is probably not enough time. So just, I'll throw out some language. You guys can accept it, reject it. But maybe within one year of the final settlement or resolution with your insurance company is the right deadline. And that doesn't have to come back to you again.
For those who don't know, Catherine had a prior life as a lawyer. She's recovering now. But thank you for applying that, those skills. Yes. And speaking of which, yes, Ms. Emru?
Not recovered from being a lawyer yet. So if we wanna support the policy that all the homes that need remediation get remediation, then we actually make this ordinance not have a timeout and we make it apply to everybody, not just original homeowners. Because there could be people who buy a home, maybe a family like mine with two small children, and you move in and you find out, why do we all have headaches? Why are we getting nosebleeds? And then you start digging into it and you discover, I can't believe it. This house is, is damaged. And the people who sold the house could've done it in good faith. You know, they were advised this was enough to do and they did it. And they said it's remediated and the law allows you to do that. You don't have to disclose this as a problem in your house because you've done what you were advised to do, but it was bad advice. So there could be somebody five years from now who buys one of these houses and ends up in this situation. And I think there is someone, and is she not in Louisville? Somebody who lost their house, went and bought a house, and that house was severely smoke damaged. And she's freaking out because she gets none of the Community Foundation money for that or anything. She's stuck with like $200,000 of smoke damage. There is somebody actually in this situation. Lost a house, bought a smoke-damaged house. Talk about bad luck. And so if this comes up anywhere in the city, we want these people to fix their houses. So my recommendation is that we support the policy of doing away with toxic homes somehow. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Yes, please.
I think one of the things that's, from a positive standpoint of extending the timeline, as I said before, HUD does not have a smoke standard. So Representative Brown and Representative Ammibele are both working on pushing that, as well as DOLA, Department of Local Affairs, is working with HUD, trying to establish those guidelines. So I think by giving and extending that timeline, we're allowing for the wheels of legislative kind of processes to take place as well. So that may be able to push some of the insurance companies as we get further into this recovery. So rather than kind of not extending that timeline, giving a little additional, more additional time to allow people to make the decision to actually stay and remediate, I think could be a really big positive. You know, 120 homes across the burn scar have been sold already. So we've lost 120 members of the community already and another 80 are for sale. So across Boulder County, there's a huge impact. And every one of those are a loss to the neighborhood, to the fabric of the community. And like everyone else has said, they're working really hard to stay. So I think in, in extending that, I, I realize you're late to the party, but you can make that up by extending it. And, and I think don't beat yourself up for being late to the party because everything has been, been a layer of pretty much pure hell for every part of this recovery. So I think that knowing that as long as you're moving forward and trying to help in some way makes a difference. Extending it is not going to offend those that have a destroyed home. They're already on their way. I think trying to find ways financially to help this group of folks is needed. There are, we're asking for SBA to reopen the cases and reopen the window. And we're hoping that that might help. DOLA has changed their rules. Community Foundation changed their rules on reimbursement of this recently on expenses already incurred. So we're seeing a lot of positive kind of contribution to helping this group. So I think everything that you could do to help them will go a long way in restoring the community too. Thanks.
Anyone else? Let's see if there's anybody online. I don't see anybody. Okay. Let's go back to council discussion. Yes, Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. I, I'd like to add in, if we can, since we're talking about, you know, extending dates, timelines, which I think is a really good idea. There's, this has come up before too with the total losses and the rebuild, is the implications of adding a fence, redoing landscaping this burn down. There's a use tax component to that. If there's a way for us to make sure that additional permits that they would need beyond, because, and there's other, I was gonna say beyond just this, but sometimes you have to get a permit with each one of your contractors. So you may not have one contractor do the entire job. So each one of those could need, conceivably need a permit. Hire somebody to work on the roof, somebody to work on the insulation. Somebody else does another project. If we can make sure it's not just one submission for a permit and the use tax is relieved, but anything that they're doing that is related to recovering from the impacts of this fire, that would be really helpful, I think.
Thanks. Anyone else? So I'm gonna, well, I, maybe I'll, I'll say this before I close the public hearing. And then we can move as we, we should. The, the section, just so I understand it, we're kind of coalescing around at least on 1867. We're looking, I believe, at Section 1C. That's, which is the building permit application is filed with the City of Louisville Honor before December 24th. We, we can talk about that in a minute. The motion can, can deal with the time period. But I, I hear a kind of a consensus building at least for 2025. And Councilmember Kern was just talking about, I think, modifying the term "building application" in some sort of way. And we can, we can talk a little more about what that, what that might mean. I don't, the one thing I know is dangerous is drafting ordinances from the DICE. But I think we typically have been able to include concept and approve conceptually what the language is. I'd prefer to pass the, the, these tonight or at least vote on them. Tell me, if we could, you know, I might ask either Director or, or City Attorney about what kind of language might work to, to modify that term in, in 1C of 1867 to perhaps broaden the concept of just building permit applications to, you know, follow-ups? Yes?
Yeah. So I think we could come up with some language on that. I just wanna point out, though, I think the state use tax only is for the residential structure. And then for the rebuild, it's only for the residential structure. So for consistency, you may wanna consider that as well. But we could change it to say primary structure and accessory. I mean, we, we could be specific and say primary structure, accessory structures, including fences. I think the things that we're seeing that people are permitting for separately are definitely fences because we actually require that. But we are seeing people voluntarily do solar separately. That's a very common one. We don't require that, but some people are voluntarily doing that. But that's part of the primary structure. So I think that could be interpreted to include it. So I think it's anything detached, like a storage shed, a spa, a fence. I think those clearly aren't included. So we could say accessory structures and fences and add that language to sub-paragraph A. And then there's a question of if you wanna amend it for total losses to keep on. But that would have to be, of course, a separate ordinance that we'd have to draft and run through the hearing process.
I, I gotta say, I, I share your concern with trying to draft a, a lot of new language while we're sitting up here. And I, I wonder if we should stick to the date for now and vote on what's before us and come back and amend it later if, if, you know, I know that's additional meeting time, additional process. But I just worry that if we try and do it live, we're gonna get it wrong.
Let me make one suggestion. I, I think we can extend the date pretty easily. That's an easy, that's an easy fix. I think you're right on the other language we should. But maybe, you know, and sometimes, sometimes you do everything all at once and sometimes you do it a little bit piecemeal. And there's nothing wrong with coming back with an amendment after we get this done. I, I think that the people who've come out tonight and the people who are looking to us to show that kind of leadership, I don't, I don't want anything to get in that, in the way of that. So, but I, I hear your point. I think to the other pieces of this, I think I, I agree.
Yeah, and I, I'm supportive of changing the date. I feel confident in our ability to change 2024 to 2025.
All right. Let's see. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Is there a motion on Ordinance 1867?
I'll move to approve Ordinance Number 1867, Series 2023, an ordinance exempting construction materials from the city's use tax for building permits issued for reconstruction of homes damaged or destroyed in the Marshall Fire burn area with the amendment that it be extended until December 30th of 2025.
31st, I think.
Just, just to clarify, you, you meant to include the title that's on the bill or the ordinance itself, right?
Oh, the use tax exemption up here?
No, just, I, I think the, I think the language is just a little bit different on a No, just, I think the, I think the language is just a little bit different on 1867, if I'm remembering.
I read that.
Is that, well, maybe I'm, if I'm wrong.
I think we're good.
We're good? Okay, good.
Second.
Just have a quick friendly amendment to extend it to December 31st of '25.
What did I say?
30th.
Oh, 30th, okay.
Will you accept my friendly amendment?
31st, okay. Yes, I will.
I also have a friendly amendment. I'd like to throw it out there and just see what your reaction is. I don't know if it's overly complicated, but I would add a friendly amendment to include accessory structures and fences. I don't think that's a
I would second that.
big rewrite.
I think that should be something in a future discussion where we extend it, where we offer it for partially destroyed, but also fully destroyed, and just come up with one new ordinance that covers both.
So is that a rejection of the friendly?
A rejection of the friendly amendment, sorry.
Can we get a second to the original motion before you make?
I second it.
Okay. Thank you.
So for clarification, are we gonna be able to come back with one that does both? Or are we gonna come back with two anyway?
I think we can draft one that applies to both fire damage, loss, and smoke, ash, other damage.
Okay, I'll strike my friendly amendment.
Thank you.
It's been rejected, so you don't have to strike it.
Well, I strike it anyway. In cooperation with my good friend Deb.
All right. So take a roll call.
Mayor Protem Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
I move that we pass Ordinance Number 1868, Series 2023, an ordinance adopting by reference to the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code as an alternative for the repair and rebuilding of homes that sustain smoke, heat, water, ash, or other damage as a result of a Marshall Fire, with an amendment that the deadline be extended to December 31st, 2025.
Second.
Or three seconds.
Did you get that, Clerk Booth? All right, you're just gonna pick one? It's good to have that many seconds, to be quite honest. All right, let's, any discussion on that motion? All right, take a roll call, please.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
So both ordinances pass, and thank you very much. And it's about, why don't we, yeah, let's go to the next item. We could take a short break if we want, 10 minutes before. Why don't we come back here at 8:00, straight up? Thank you.
In January of this year, we had a presentation, and there was an acceptance of materials for a general maintenance management plan for our Parks Division that had been in the works for about 18 months. We were asked by that council, which, looking at you all now, is only about half of this council, to come back in a year and give an update on the implementation of that maintenance management plan. And so tonight, our Parks Superintendent, Abby McNeil, will be providing you with that update. Also recognizing that we have some new faces on the DICE, she'll also be presenting maybe a bit of an educational overview of everything that encompasses our Parks Division. So, Abby?
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Abby McNeil. I'm the Parks Superintendent. We'll get going. So a brief overview of what our Parks Division manages every day. About 355 acres of park property. We have a full inventory of large playgrounds, a cemetery, some athletic fields, a huge urban tree canopy, and we also provide snow support for our walkways throughout the city. We have a very dedicated staff. I inherited here when I took the position. There's 126 years of combined city service on this team. That's something that, as we learned earlier, the City of Lewisville is very proud of. This team is very dedicated to that. On top of that, of those, add to it, they come with an experience of over 250 years committed to the green industry. So you have a very dedicated staff, and I'm proud to be a part of it. A recap of what the general maintenance management plan is, and this came from the consultant's report, so this is not my, my next couple of slides are from there. Basically, they created a journey for us to take. It's where we are, and where we're going, and benchmarking us along the way. So we're gonna, aside from some of these, we've put in some implementations of how we're going to get there. This is one of the big things that they hit on in their presentation in January. City of Lewisville is right in the middle, and it shows how many parks per resident that we offer. So we have 37 parks, and that is, for, for one park, it's 574 people can touch it. For a city of our size, we fit right in the middle of that. We are offering a lot of land to our people to use every day, and they do. This data came from the National Parks and Recreation Association, or NRPA. Our Parks Operations Team, however, does manage more acreage to staffing, and that was one of the things that the report came out, is that we actually do a lot for what little staff and operations that we have. What I'm getting ready to go into next are what their recommendations are, and how we've already addressed that in the last 11 months. So we've implemented a consistent maintenance process of service levels and customer expectations. As we presented in the report in January, we had already kicked off developing a best management practice and standard level, and we've implemented that throughout this entire year. And our staff is embracing that to be our daily operations. So we plan as a staff to revisit that and make it our norm going forward. We've developed a preventative maintenance plan and documented form of inspections. Currently, it's all done on paper and then uploaded. We've recently entered into an agreement to have a software package that will then make it mobile, so staff will be able to take a tablet out into the field and document it while they're doing it, starting as early as January. They'll also be doing playground inspections that way, and our park maintenance, our park inspections that way, and we're adding to those inspection reports. We've also worked about 70% to 75% build-out of the workflow process through Lucidity, which is the same program that our Public Works Team uses. So we're getting closer to having an active work order system. We've implemented some benchmarking data. We created a new subdivision from that. We had an opportunity with some staff leaving and some shifting of positions to see that we had a need to fully develop a subdivision strictly for horticulture and streetscapes. They'll take over the new medians that we've, that we've recently renovated, but it also allows our forestry team to really be dedicated to managing our urban tree canopy. So it allows a little bit of separation of everything, but also some continuity between it all. We started contracting work to help get ahead of the deferred maintenance in our tree canopy throughout the city. We spent the last probably five months connecting in certain quadrants throughout the city and really taking care of the right-of-way trees that our staff wasn't able to get to. And it was basically, it's helping us catch up, so we're And it was basically, it, it's helping us catch up, so we're, we're spreading that around and have a plan for it. And we're still trying to increase our service levels, but we're still delivering at the, at that expectation, but we'll come back to helping increase that. The other thing we did was, we didn't wait to have the Lucidity system in place, we actually created some task tracking where staff report weekly what they do, where they do it, and how long it took them. So, we're already capturing some of the data that our work order will, will do. For example, I pulled some data while we were sitting here, we've put in almost four hundred hours of just snow operations in 2023. We've put in about ninety-six hours strictly in our cemetery. So, I can break it down into, you know, what months they're doing it and what we're doing. So, we're collecting that data as we go. So, staff's getting used to what they'll have to do here in the future. We've done a complete inventory of assets, as well as an assessment of those assets in order to help build that work order system. So, we have a really good starting point of the condition of all of our park benches, the number of trashcans per park spaces, our current assessment of our playgrounds and so forth. So, we're capturing all that inventory to get us going. We created also a five-year lookout of how to replace all of our capital equipment, specifically to parks, or our mowers and our utility carts. I put a plan on paper, it's just a starting point to where we can go. We're scheduling out some things into 2024, which is including the resiliency planning, talking about how, how we are all prepared throughout, you know, how it ties into the resiliency plan of the city. And we're also working on creating what those KPIs are, or performance indicators, to help us further our best management practices and our standards. So, some other highlights, again, I talked about our pruning contracts. We've also converted ninety-five percent of our two-cycle units to electric or battery-operated tools through a matching grant. We've participated in some capital improvement projects, our median conversions, our playground renovations. We've done a full irrigation update, including the pump at our community park. We've done some tennis court resurfacing, and we're working on fleet upgrades. Going forward, we're gonna continue to implement inspection software. We're looking at future options for electrical equipment and how to convert more sustainable landscapes. Our horticulture team is diligently updating the preferred plant list to include fire-wise ratings, so when it's public and people are rebuilding, they'll understand some of the same plant material that we're recommending that we're putting in our spaces. We're looking towards improving our lighting, lighting and making it more energy efficient. Might be a phased program out at our sports complex. We have continued tennis court renovations and some more irrigation pump replacements, which is just aging infrastructure. And lastly, we're gonna actually fully implement, I hope by the middle of the second quarter, just to, kind of, some things have to come together, our work order system, so we really can start tracking all the time and materials it takes to do what we do. I'm looking into a maintenance management software that'll help us track our equipment. It's one I've used in the past, it'll help us actually track cost of ownership of what it takes when we ask to buy a seventy thousand dollar electric mower. We'll have a cost of ownership that we can attest to that, and then further implementing all of our, our tracking. So, with that, that's really what we've done to date. I'll take any questions if you have any.
Council questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Fahy.
I have one. When you were talking about your asset identification, does that include all of the land, all the pieces of land here and there, that, you know, outside of an HOA, does it belong to the city or the HOA, who's responsible for maintaining it, all of that?
We are still working on identifying all of those. I've actually been working with our Public Works Department that manages the backflow inspections, and we're slowly finding backflows that are still listed as city-owned but managed by the HOA, and how to shift the responsibility over to the correct property owner.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very much, I mean, this is a mouthful.
Mayor Lay and council, I would also note, similar in, in this feed, first off, great question, Councilmember Fahy, that has been a challenge. There is a substantial amount of right-of-way and entryway property that has kind of been in a gray area, so that's been a pretty big lift. But I would also note, on that same note, and I see that Catherine Smith is still here, and I've spent a lot of quality time with her over the past couple of weeks at public meetings, that this is kind of in similar form or fashion to what open space operations is going to go through over the next year to eighteen months as well, as we evaluate full asset management and best practices, excuse me, and best practices for maintaining those lands. So, just more to come, but this is a good indication of what you're, you'll see with that.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
I don't think there's any council direction, I mean, you know.
Mayor, you want to do public comment?
Oh, I suppose, yeah. Any, any public gonna comment? Ms. Smith? Okay, nobody is online commenting, thank you for pointing that out, Madam Clerk. Let's go next to item D, which is Resolution Number Eighty-One, Series Twenty-Two-Three, a resolution amending the Twenty-Two-Three budget by amending appropriations in the General Fund, Open Space and Park Fund, Historical Preservation Fund, Recreation Fund, Capital Projects Fund, Recreation Center Debt Fund, Water Utilities Fund, Waste Water Utility Fund, Storm Water Utility Fund, and Golf Course Fund, and additional appropriations within such funds and adjusting budgeted revenues in the General Fund, Open Space and Parks Fund, Recreation Fund, Capital Project Fund, Storm Water Utility Fund, and Golf Course Fund. It's a public hearing. I'm gonna open the public hearing, and we'll start with a staff presentation.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
I, I can, but I think, I think Councilmember Hamilton will probably grab this and whack you with it, actually.
Go ahead.
What an introduction, thank you very much. Good evening, council members, my name is Ryder Bailey, Finance Director for the City of Louisville. Today, you'll be receiving a brief presentation on the final amendment to the city's Twenty-Two-Three Staff is seeking your approval of the final budget amendment, budget amendment to the Twenty-Two-Three citywide budget. This final amendment is largely administrative and primarily driven by council-approved contract amendments during the year, Marshall Fire unbudgeted expenses, expenses and revenues. A reminder that financial staff batches budget amendments from previously heard council items. This is only the second and anticipated final budget amendment for Twenty-Two-Three. Today's amendment can be broken into three categories. Previously approved council contract amendments and obligations made throughout the year. For example, Microsoft licenses recently and other contract, capital contract amendments. Marshall Fire unbudgeted revenues and expenditures, public safety disaster response team invoices, fencing, utility water quality control expenses. And lastly, administrative, for example, within the Historical Preservation Fund, we have prior year grant awards being paid out of the current year budget, these are things you approve, so we're administratively correcting the budget for Twenty-Two-Three. The resolution attached to today's packet is the official amendment, amending document and presents the amendment by fund, the city's legal level of authority. The body of the resolution prevent, presents changes at the fund level, while the appendices to the resolution provide the greatest level of detail at the line item account. A reminder again that this amendment is largely administrative, codifying decisions councils made throughout the year, adjusting for unbudgeted Marshall Fire revenues and expenses, and the administrative cleanup of the Historical Preservation Fund. In aggregate, offset by the additional revenues this amendment has in it, the total amendment is about one percent of the citywide budget, and upon budget amendment adoption, all funds with reserve requirements will remain in full compliance with those policies. The Finance Committee reviewed the proposed amendment at their December fourteenth committee meeting. Staff is recommend, recommending that council approve the final budget amendment to the Twenty-Two-Three citywide budget. And with that, thank you for your attention, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Are there questions, council questions for staff? There are no questions, that's probably never gonna happen to you again, Director, but, all right, is there any public comment? There is not. Any council questions or discussion? Then I am gonna close the public hearing, is there motion on Resolution Number Eighty-One?
Oh, go ahead. I move that we pass Resolution Number Eighty-One, Series Twenty-Two-Three. Second.
Second.
Sorry.
Okay. Any, any comments or discussion? No, it's call for call.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes. City Attorney's Report.
I have no report this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Council Comments, Council Committee Reports, and Identification of Future Agenda Items. Zip, okay.
I, I would just say that this might be the place to make sure that we are having something brought to us about that, the use tax rebates on fencing and outbuildings and things like that, maybe even landscaping.
Confirmed.
Okay, thank you.
And longer term, I, I don't know that this really needs to be made very specific, but I, I think we do need at some point to figure out if there are, if there's a city role to play in helping to address the kind of only partially remediated disasters that are some of these folks' homes that they talked about tonight. And honestly, I don't, you know, that's probably a really complicated thing that involves CDPHE and the County Health Department and all kinds of other folks, but, you know, at some point down the road, we ought to revisit that.
I appreciate that, it, it is complicated. Deputy City Manager and I were discussing some ideas that we want to explore in that regard during the latter break, so, here you go.
I'm sure they will bubble up at some point, yes, that's my career.
Yep, I kind of wanted to add to that, there's another layer that I was reminded tonight that we may want to address, not just, or in Louisville, but county-wide if it could help, is within the public school systems. So, the schools, the BBS, the Boulder Valley Schools, as well as the private schools, were still impacted by smoke and ash, and those same uncertain, untested standards that people are having a problem with in their homes applies to the school system. And we want our kids to be safe and breathe well in their houses, but in the schools too. So, if there is anything that we can do where we're helping with the homes and trying to come up with something for that, if we can work with BBSD and the private schools as well to ensure that our children are in a safe environment to be in, that would be great.
Okay, any other comments? We are adjourned.
Happy holidays.